Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Kietzow and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill this God with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Willschardt. Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea. Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen. Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jettie. Alderman Leezie Gola. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fourteen members present.
Alderman Karen is not feeling well this evening and is unable to attend. The sole item on the agenda for this evening is a public hearing on Resolution R eighteen oh nineteen relative to the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds. And in keeping with the way we have always conducted these, I will sit down and allow the Budget Chair to take over.
Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the budget. Before I introduce the mayor to give a brief overview of the budget, I just wanted to go over a few of the ground rules for the public hearing. I'm going to go through the various departments in the budget one at a time. If you have a question on that particular department, please come forward to the microphone here in front and ask your question. If the mayor or Mr. Griffin can't answer that question, they may ask assistance from one of the division directors who are here. Please give everyone an opportunity to ask their questions and limit any statements to a reasonable length and only on the department that's currently being discussed. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Glad to be here again on the public hearing on the FY fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. So we just have a few slides to kind of give an overview. And then of course, whoops, of course we'll be available to answer questions. So you see, this is just the cover page and John will go to the next. We've discussed a little bit about this before, Mr. Chair. There are a number of challenges that we are facing as we look forward to fiscal year two thousand nineteen. First of all, probably foremost, we have a state mandated, state ordered property revaluation, which could, and we've talked about the details and there's just a little bit more about it in here, could because of the great increases that our homes have seen and the increases in value over the last five years, the state mandated and ordered revaluation could result in a potential shift from property taxes from commercial onto residential, if the commercial properties have not gone up as much as residential. So that presents an overriding challenge for us in terms of minimizing, mitigating, or limiting the effect of the state ordered revaluation. So as the second bullet point says, we need to make some tough decisions when funding city needs. There are many things requested by many different departments that we did not include in the budget. There are positions in the school department. The fire department requested more dispatchers, which I'm sure would be very helpful. We certainly need more police officers than we have for some time because of the opioid epidemic and the resulting problems. But we tried to stick with keeping, hopefully what we have without adding too much because we want to keep the budget very tight. One very significant issue in the budget is always the Capital and Equipment Reserve Fund, or CERF. We have funded that at a one million dollar level and as a result have talked with departments and deferred purchases of some items of equipment into the next year or two. I think, Mr. Chair, when we get to the issue of the escrows, which is going to come up in the fall, this is an area that we need to consider backfilling at that time as we have in prior budget years to help to contribute money into the CERF fund, making sure that we maintain the quality of equipment that we have and a reasonable replacement schedule. There are some cost pressures in the budget on non-sellery items. You see that in the next line item. One, probably the most notable, is there's a six hundred thousand dollar increase in our solid waste costs. As you know, we contribute tax money into the enterprise fund, the solid waste enterprise fund. One particular cost that has gone up considerably is the disposal of the recycled items that we have. We have a contract with Casella, who is a major hauler, and they dispose of the recycling that we collect curbside as well as the recycling that people deliver to the landfill. In talking with Public Works, the cost of disposal of about between five and six thousand tons of recycled material has gone from less than one dollar a ton in July of two thousand seventeen, so that's about ten months ago, gone from one dollar, or less than one dollar, to now eighty-two dollars a ton, which is the current rate. So it's gone up one hundred times in ten months. Now, we have budgeted, in the budget, four hundred thousand dollars to dispose of recycled items, which if the current rate of eighty-two dollars a ton holds, will probably be enough. However, Casella has warned that it's possible the recycling market is bad and it's possible the costs could go up more than that, in which case we might have to look at trying to find another source of funds or some emergency measure. But right now, it looks like we've budgeted enough, even though costs have gone up as much as I have indicated. We are concerned about some reductions, as always, in state revenue. One area where we're seeing a reduction in revenue is the school stabilization grant, which has a very long history, but it now is about four million of the total in school aid that we get. Four million of the school aid is the stabilization grant. That is being reduced by about ten percent, or about four hundred thousand dollars a year. So we will be getting four hundred thousand dollars on the stabilization grant, less in fiscal nineteen than we do in the current year, which is fiscal eighteen. So those are some of the challenges. In terms of our strategy for this year, first, I presented the budget earlier than ever before. At the first meeting in March, just a couple of years ago, it was the first meeting in May. And the point here is to give the Board of Aldermen more time to consider the budget in a more comfortable manner, allowing a few months rather than four to six weeks, both because of the challenges, the complexity of the budget, and because of the fact that we have a number of Aldermen who have not been through the budget process before. So I think it made the process much more constructive to have proposed the budget back in March. Again, one of our strategies is to limit the budget as much as possible to make sure that the assessment has the least possible impact so that the budget itself doesn't result in any significant increase in property taxes. And we've also tried to maintain level services in the face of the fiscal challenges that I've outlined. Here's a slide you've seen before, which just outlines the potential effect of the revaluation. This is just a model. We're trying to make sure we maximize commercial values, but as you can see here, it could result in a shift of values. Residential properties currently represent about sixty-two and a half percent of the entire assessed value of the city of eight and a half billion dollars. That could go up as high as sixty-six and therefore result in a shift. But we are, as we've discussed before, we've hired KRT and we're trying to minimize that impact. So looking at an overview of the FY nineteen budget, the proposed budget is two hundred and sixty-two million seven hundred thousand dollars. The increase over the budget that the Board of Aldermen adopted last year in FY eighteen is one point six percent. That is the leanest budget we've had in the city in a long time. In terms of revenues, we are still budgeting revenues conservatively. We expect vehicle registrations, which is a significant source of revenue, to remain about constant with FY eighteen. We do have a continued low interest rate environment so that the funds that we are earning on the city's undesignated reserve fund, other reserve funds, and all the money that the city has in the bank at various times, the income from that is very limited. I mean, years ago, when I was mayor before, for example, the interest income we received on our deposits was actually a multimillion dollar source of revenue. Now that's really not the case anymore. And we do, as I mentioned before, face the reduction in state aid in at least one area. And so that is incorporated in the budget. Now, the lawsuit that was brought in Superior Court and which was decided by Judge Temple, the result was, from at least the opinion of Judge Temple, that the current spending cap is not enforceable as a result of being in violation of state law. However, we wanted to make sure that people understood that what the effect of this budget would have been if the spending cap were still in effect. This, we're giving you therefore, as it says, for illustrative purposes only. Again, a very tight budget, which according to the calculation of John Griffin, the CFO, is about a million eighty-three thousand dollars under what the spending cap would have been if that were still enforceable in effect. In any event, I think, Mr. Chair, gives you an overview of the budget and will provide the context with which we can discuss the budget as the public hearing goes forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, I am going to start calling the departments. And when I do, if you have any questions or comments about that particular department, please come up to the microphone and ask the question. And again, if the mayor or CFO can't answer it, we will have somebody from the divisions answer it. We're only going to go through them once. So when we get to that particular department and the division, if you have a question, please come up and talk to us. So the first division is general government and the first item is Department one oh one, the mayor's office. And appropriations are on page sixty-five. By the way, there are copies of the budget for anyone that doesn't have one over here on the right stage. Okay. So again, Department one oh one, mayor's office. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. The next is one oh two, Board of Aldermen. Appropriations are on page seventy-three. Seeing no questions or comments. The next is the legal department, one oh three. And the appropriations are on page seventy-five. Seeing no questions or comments. The next is the city clerk's office. And the revenue is on page thirty-two. And the appropriations are on page seventy-nine. Seeing no comments. The next is one oh nine, civic and community activities. And the appropriations are on page eighty-three. Seeing no comments or questions. The next is one eleven, human resources. And the appropriations are on page eighty-six. Seeing no one. Benefits is the next, one thirteen. And the appropriations are on page eighty-nine. Next is Department one fifteen, citywide pensions. And the appropriations are on page ninety-two.
I'm so sorry to be late, but I hope-
Speaking of the microphone?
I'm so sorry to be late, but I hope I haven't missed the human services part of it. Is this the time that people are allowed to speak?
We're going department by department. And which was the?
The, you know, the appropriations to nonprofit organizations.
No, it hasn't come up yet.
Thank you.
It has? Oh, I'm sorry, one oh nine? So you can give, you can provide comments. Please identify yourself and address for the record.
Certainly. I'm Tina Andrade. I live at twelve Mount Laurel's Drive in Nashua. And I'm here representing Home Health and Hospice Care.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm here because we had just gotten the information that we had been in the budget appropriating a little over twenty-six thousand dollars. Home Health and Hospice Care is a visiting nurse association and hospice. And we were founded in Nashua in eighteen eighty-three. And of course, we're a nonprofit organization. We visit people in their homes and care for them and in the community hospice house. Our grant proposal was for forty thousand dollars. Last year, we received a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we were very grateful for that. Because we're a nonprofit organization, our mission is to care for people, whatever their financial circumstances. It's a challenge. But we have always had the cooperation of the community so that we were able to do that. And, you know, we work very hard to raise the funds so that we can take care of folks that have fallen through the insurance cracks. So our proposal was to care for the indigent residents of Nashua. You know, I've worked for the organization for fourteen years. And on the first day that I took the job, I opened a note that had come to me from the family member of a patient. And it said, "You are our angels at a time in our lives when we needed you the most." And I never forgot that and the note is still on my desk. And I've had since then, literally hundreds of notes like that. So the appropriation, which we're very grateful for, and we were very grateful last year to get the funds that we got. But we're under tremendous constraints by government reimbursements. And in fact, those reimbursements don't really pay for the care that we're giving folks. And when we take indigent residents of Nashua, there is no money for that. So it's all from fundraising that we can actually take these patients. Now, the other thing that I think is important to note is that for-profit healthcare organizations that take care of folks in the home setting, pick and choose the patients that they'll care for. We are not just taking the easy patients. We are taking patients that are very complex. We're very fortunate because our clinicians are tremendously skilled. But nevertheless, it is a challenge and it's very expensive. I think that the important thing to note is that if our organization was not able to care for these Nashua residents, many of them would languish in a hospital setting, which costs your community, Nashua, our community, much more money. All of the medical research shows today that the very best place to care for people is in the home setting, where they are comfortable, they feel safe and secure, and that's where they want to be. And it turns out that that's actually the healthiest place to be. So I'm just here tonight and we sent a letter from our CEO to the Board of Aldermen. With all due respect, you know, we are grateful for every penny that we could get. But when you cut over twelve thousand dollars for our appropriation last year, it just truly means that less patients who have fallen through the insurance cracks will be able to be cared for by our clinicians. So I just thought I would bring it to the attention of the Board of Aldermen for them, hopefully, to perhaps reconsider. But whatever we get, we are deeply grateful. Thank you so much. I can answer questions. I don't know if folks have them.
Do any of the Aldermen have a question? We're going to be doing our budget wrap-up this coming week. So we've made no motions one way or the other with the budget, so. And I did take that letter and had it sent to all of the Aldermen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, the other, the next one is Department one eighteen, other general government. And the revenue is on page thirty-three. Seeing no one. The next is the Department one thirty-one, the Hunt Building. And the appropriations are on page ninety-three. Seeing no one. The next is Department one sixty-six, parking operations. The revenues are on page thirty-four. And the appropriations are on page ninety-four. Seeing no one. The next is one eighty-three, economic development. And the appropriations are on page ninety-six. Seeing no one. Now we're going to Financial Services Division. Department one twenty-six, financial services. The revenues are on page thirty-five. And the appropriations are on page one twelve. Seeing no one. The next is Risk Management. And the appropriations are on page one fourteen. No one's. Next is one twenty-nine, city buildings. The appropriations are on page one nineteen. No, excuse me, one seventeen. The next department is one thirty, purchasing department. And the revenue is on page thirty-seven. And the appropriations are on page one nineteen. Seeing no one. Next is Department one thirty-two, assessing. The revenue is on page thirty-eight. The appropriations are on page one twenty-one. Seeing no one. The next is GIS. The revenue is on page thirty-nine. And the appropriations are on page one twenty-three. Okay, that completes financial services. The next division is information technology. Department one twenty, appropriations, which is telecommunications. The appropriations are on page one thirty-three. Seeing no one. And Department one twenty-two, information technology. The appropriations are on page one thirty-four. Seeing no one. Next division is police. Department one fifty, the revenue is on page forty. And the appropriations are on page one forty-one. The next division is fire. Department one fifty-two, fire department. And the revenue is on page forty-two. And the appropriations are on page one fifty. Seeing no one. The next division is emergency preparedness. The first apartment is one fifty-six, emergency management. And the appropriations are on page one sixty-one. Seeing no one. The next department is one fifty-seven, citywide communications. And the appropriations are on page one sixty-three. Next division is other public safety. And the first apartment is one fifty-nine, hydrant fees, fire protection. And the appropriations are on page one sixty-six. Seeing no one. The next is Department one sixty-two, street lighting. And the appropriations are on page one sixty-seven. The next division is public health and community services. And the first apartment is one seventy-one, community services. And the appropriations are on page one seventy-nine. Next apartment is one seventy-two, community health. And the revenue is on page forty-three. And the appropriations on page one eighty-one. The next apartment is one seventy-three, environmental health. The revenue is on page forty-four. And the appropriations are on page one eighty-three. Seeing no one. The next is Department one seventy-four, welfare administration. The revenues are on page forty-five. And the appropriations on page one eighty-five. The next apartment is one seventy-five, welfare assistance. And the appropriations are on page one eighty-six. The next division is public works and engineering. First apartment is one sixty, public works and engineering. The revenues are on page forty-six. And the appropriations are on page one ninety-four. Seeing no one. The next is street department. It's Department one sixty-one. And the revenue is on page- That's Department 1, uh, 61, and the revenue is on page forty-seven, and the appropriations are on page 196. Seeing no one. The next is Department 177, Parks and Recreation, and the revenue is on page forty-eight, and the appropriations are on page 199. Seeing no one. The next division is Public Services. The department is 140, Pinewood Cemetery, and the appropriations are on page 204. Next is Department 142, Woodlawn Cemetery, and the revenue is on page forty-nine, and the appropriations are on 205. Seeing no one. The Department 144, Edgewood and Suburban Cemeteries. The revenues are on page fifty, and the appropriations are on page 207. The next division is Public Library. Department 179, Public Library. The revenue is on page fifty-one, and the appropriations are on page 213. Seeing no one. The next division is Community Development. First apartment is 153, Building Inspection. The revenue is on page fifty-two. The appropriations are on page 224. Next department is 155, Code Enforcement, and the appropriations are on page 226. Seeing no one. The next department is 170, Hydroelectric Operations. The revenue is on page fifty-four, and the appropriations are on page 228. Next department is 181, Community Development, and the appropriations are on page 229. Seeing no one. Department 182, Planning and Zoning. The revenues are on page fifty-five, and the appropriations are on page 231. The next department is 184, Urban Programs, and the appropriations are on page 233. The next department is 186, Transportation, and the appropriations are on page 236. Next division is Education. Department 191, School Department. The revenue is on page fifty-six. The appropriations are on page 250. Okay. The next division is Debt Service Contingency and Interfund Transfers. First apartment is 193, Debt Service, and the appropriations are on page 255. Seeing no one. The next department is 194, Contingency, and the appropriations are on page 259. The next department is 198, Interfund Transfers, and the appropriations are on page 260. Seeing no one. The next division is Capital Improvements, and the appropriations are on page 262. The next item is Enterprise Funds. It's in the green section of the budget book. It's under Department 6000, Solid Waste Disposal System Fund. The revenues are on page 268. Appropriations are on page 269. The next is Department 162-Double-Zero, which is the Wastewater User Fund, and the appro, the revenue is on page 278, and the appropriation are on page 288. Seeing no one. I'll go through the pink section, which is the Special Revenue Funds, one at a time. Twenty-five oh one, Public Health Clinic Fees Fund. Two eighty-eight, page 288. Police Law Enforcement Training Fund, on page 289. Item twenty-five oh three, Park Recreation and Program Funds, page 290. Next is twenty-five oh four, Holman Stadium Events Fund, page 291. Twenty-five oh five, PEG Access Channels Fund, page 292. Twenty-five oh six, Hunt Building Facility Rental Fund, page 294. Twenty-five oh seven, Fire Training Facility Rental Fund, page 296. Twenty-five oh eight, Special Road and Highway Fund, page 297. Twenty-five ten, Penetruck Acquisition Bond Fund, page 299. Then we have the specials, now we have the school special revenue funds. Twenty-one hundred, Food Services, on page 302. Twenty-one twenty, Summer Feeding Program, page 304. Twenty-two oh one, Driver Education, on page 305. Twenty-two oh four, Summer School, on page 306. Twenty-two oh seven, Adult Continuing Education, on page 307. Twenty-two twelve, Athletic Revenue Fund, page 309. Twenty-two seventeen, School Facilities Rental, page 310. Twenty-two twenty-two, After-School Program, page 311. Twenty-two twenty-seven, North Student Shop, page 312. Twenty-two thirty-two, South Student Shop, page 313. Twenty-two forty-seven, Culinary Arts, page 314. Twenty-two fifty-two, Daycare, page 315. Twenty-two fifty-seven, Special Education Local Tuition, page 316. Twenty-two fifty-eight, School CTE Tuition Fund, page 317. Supplemental Information, which is in the blue section. Appropriated Expendable Trust and Reserve Funds, on page 320. Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF, Planned Route Replacements, on page 326. Nashua Airport Authority, page 327. General Government, page 330. Economic Development, page 331. Financial Services, page 332. Police, page 333. Fire, page 334. Public Health and Community Services, page 335. Again, these are supplemental information sections. Public Works, 336. Public Services, 338. Public Library, 339. School Department, 342. Solid Waste, 343. We have run through the entire budget, and I must say, this is the first year we had absolutely, we actually have one very applicable comment. So I will now open it quickly. If anyone has any general comments about the budget, or questions about the overall Seeing none. Do I hear a motion from the Board of Alderman? Alderman will share. Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:40.